All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the City Council Ward Four Forum hosted by the Shawnee Chamber of Commerce and Legislative Committee. My name is Joe Riedel, the Chair of that committee, and it is my honor to moderate today's forum. The Johnson County Public Policy Council comprised of ten chambers of commerce serving Johnson County developed today's questions focusing on business and community issues. We will begin candidate speaking order alphabetically and rotate throughout the forum. We start with each candidate giving a three-minute introduction and opening statement, followed by ten-question Q and A, where each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer the question, and then each will end with a two-minute closing statement. Due to time constraints, there will be no follow-up questions, formal rebuttal time, or audience participation. So with that, let's get started with introductions, and going back to alphabetical order, we'd like to, you know, tell us a little bit about yourselves, organization you've been involved with, and why you feel you're qualified to serve on the Shawnee City Council, starting with Ms. Birchfield.
Thank you. Well, and thank you for moderating. It's not an easy job, but I appreciate you doing this. Thank you to the chamber for sponsoring this and for the staff for putting it on. It's really important that we have this opportunity to speak directly with folks about what matters to them, so I am very appreciative of this opportunity. And then thank you to everyone who's watching this recording. Turnout is so low for these kind of elections, so I really appreciate that you're taking the time to learn more about us and to have a plan to vote. I'm Laurel Birchfield. I'm running for Shawnee City Council Ward Four, and I'm running because I chose Shawnee as the home to raise my family. I have two young daughters, both attending public school in the Shawnee Mission School District, and when we were searching for a home, we wanted to make sure that we had a place where they had access to that fantastic school system, we had fantastic parks, great live events, and just a really warm and nurturing community where they could grow and thrive. And so I'm running because I want to serve this community, because we found all of that in Shawnee, and I want to make sure that everybody who wants to live here, who currently lives here and is thinking about moving here, has that same kind of interaction with Shawnee and that same opportunity to come here and raise a family. That's my vision for this city. Unfortunately, I'm not sure that the current city council or the majority of the current city council shares that vision, or has shown the leadership lately to make the right decisions to move us forward and on the right path. I'm running because I believe that I have the experience and the leadership skills to bring that back into the city council and to make sure that we're on the right path moving forward for future generations, so that everybody has the opportunity to really feel like Shawnee can be their home. I have experience in nonpartisan work, where I've worked on really difficult and emotional topics like transportation and housing that residents really feel impact their lives, and those are things that really can make or break a city. And so I would like to bring that experience in finding solutions and funding for things that really matter to our cities into the city council. I've worked exclusively in nonprofits in my career. Currently, I am the Director of Marketing and Communications for Jewish Family Services at Kansas City, and we serve Jackson and Johnson County. I've worked on a lot of agencies that really work to serve our underserved community members, as well as those who want to give back to their community and be part of the solution-making process to make their city stronger. So I believe that with my experience in communicating and nonprofit and nonpartisan outreach and partnership building, coalition building, that I have the experience to bring Shawnee forward and to make sure that we are really building up a community that serves everybody who wants to live here and feel welcomed by our community members. So, thank you. I hope I earn your vote on November 7th, and I look forward to hearing more about positions on these questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. And next up, this candidate for Ward Four, Megan Warner.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak here. I'm a small business owner here in Shawnee. I run a commercial real estate appraising business out of my home, so I understand the need for our city to be friendly to businesses, and I would love to hear any of your thoughts about how we can be more friendly to business. My life experience has been varied. I joined the Army Reserves right after high school to pay for college. I went to college at Friends University in Wichita, earned a degree in communications while working as a bank teller. That was my first career. Then I moved back to Kansas City and got a job as a dispatcher for 911 in Prairie Village. That was my second career. Then Uncle Sam decided that I needed a third career as a truck driver in Iraq, so I got to do that for a year and two days, not that I was counting. And so that was career number three. Then when I came home, I got a job as a real estate appraiser, and I have been doing that ever since. Career number four, hopefully the last career, because I love it. And I run a business out of my home here. I have a wide variety of experience, and I believe that will serve Shawnee well.
All right, thank you. Moving into the questions and answers, thank you both. As a reminder, candidates, you will each have one and a half minutes to respond, and starting with you, Megan. As a candidate, what are your top three policy issues?
Well, this is not going to take my whole time to answer. My top three policy issues would be to use our tax dollars wisely in the city, supporting our public safety officers, police, fire, and medical, and preserving our safe single-family neighborhoods.
Okay. All right, to you Laurel.
All right. My top three priorities are first to make sure that we're investing in sustainable and resilient development. I think that means saying yes to the right projects that come forward to Shawnee and that represent the input from our residents that developed our comprehensive plan and achieved Shawnee. It also means good, responsible, being good, responsible stewards of our city resources, our land, and our environment. My second priority is to be a welcoming community. I want to make sure we're prioritizing policies that welcome our residents and our businesses that want to make Shawnee their home, and that includes providing housing opportunities. Housing is something that I think Shawnee really needs to be focused on right now, and that's something that I would bring to this council. I have worked in housing policy before, and I think that that's something that we really need to make sure we're providing for our residents who need a wide variety of housing options right now. And finally, good governance is my third priority. I want to make sure that we are improving the rhetoric and the culture of our city council so that we can rebuild staff and volunteer trust in the decisions that happen with that governing body. I think Shawnee is a fantastic city for our businesses to invest in, but we need to make sure that we're making smart, transparent decisions that protect our AAA bond rating so that the businesses feel confident about investing here and becoming good neighbors for the future of our city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And staying with you for question number two here. What are your views on the value Shawnee businesses receive for their local tax dollars, and what changes, if any, would you propose to the city budget?
Well, first, I want to say that I think our chamber does a fantastic job in working hard to make sure that our businesses do receive value for their tax dollars. My priority would be to support this chamber, to make sure that we are building new lines of communication and reinforcing those lines of communication between the businesses and the city council, so that we can continuously learn about what the businesses need to be able to thrive here and be successful. I think that we need to maintain those open and regular communications. I also believe that we can improve the value that our businesses receive by intentionally investing in the infrastructure and the development that brings in more traffic to our businesses so that they can continue to increase their sales and be able to continue to thrive and profit in this community. For budget recommendations, I strongly believe that the existing relationship and the agreement with the landfill that supports our Economic Development Council is important, and that Impact Feed does a really good job through our CE program in investing in our businesses. I would make sure that we support that, and I would be opposed to anything that reallocates those funds to something else, because I think that's a huge value for our businesses, existing and new, to be able to come into Shawnee and be successful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Megan.
In preparation for tonight, I actually contacted a couple of my friends that own businesses here in Shawnee, and they both mentioned that Shawnee keeps itself clean and safe, the streets are well-maintained, traffic goes well, and the areas of distress are promptly handled. I feel that Shawnee has a safe and welcoming business environment without too many restrictions. As far as budget recommendations, I support handling tax dollars responsibly to keep the tax burden and overhead for businesses low.
Okay, thank you. Next question, and we'll stay with you, Megan. The attraction of outside dollars in the form of tourism is a great way to stimulate the local economy. If you were elected, how would you work to attract new visitors to Shawnee?
We have great opportunities through our Parks and Rec Department with the Valley of Champions. My husband and I played softball there before we had kids. That was before it was renovated. It's much nicer now. The tournaments there bring tourists from out of town to spend time with our restaurants and hotels, and I'd strongly support that. Old Shawneetown is another opportunity. Our church has a booth there, and every single person I talk to at that booth is from outside Shawnee, so I think that's a great way to bring people in from out of town. The Moonlight Markets also are a great draw to our city.
All right, thank you. Laurel?
Yeah, I also love our Parks and Rec Department. They're doing such fantastic work, and I love taking my children to the parks and being able to interact with people in those environments. I also think Visit Shawnee is doing fantastic work in bringing in tourism. We have a lot to offer, but so does Johnson County and so does the KC Metro area. And so I would love for us to continue to investigate and find unique opportunities that draw in people who want to come to Shawnee, stay, and spend their dollars. And I do think that the Valley of Champions is a great opportunity and a great example of that as well. We have some really great facilities there, and I think there's opportunity for some really unique experiences, and I'm excited to hear about some of those, such as investing in cycling, which is not something that is available throughout the metro area, but definitely fits a growing demand and need for our residents and those who live in the area, who would come to Shawnee and spend time with us if there were more opportunities to do unique things that they can't find elsewhere. I also would love to see more downtown diversification that, again, brings in some tourists. We have amazing businesses that put Shawnee on the map, like drastic measures. I'd love to see us continue to invest in those kind of businesses. And then finally, we do a really good job with our events. I love our events like Moonlight Market and those that bring in family-friendly opportunities, but I'd like to see us invest a little bit into a different demographic and find opportunities to bring in young professionals so that they want to come to Shawnee and spend their time here as well. Thank you.
Okay. Next question, and we'll stay with you Laurel. Speaking of people coming to the area. With the announcement of the Panasonic plant neighboring DeSoto, how do you see Shawnee taking advantage of the ripple effect it will have on surrounding communities?
Yeah, I think this is going to have a huge regional impact. I mean, we're looking at 4,000 high-paying, advanced manufacturing jobs that people are going to be coming in, and they're estimating another 4,000 surrounding the area in terms of people coming in and finding employment. That's a lot of people. So I think that we really need to be proactive in finding opportunities to benefit and take advantage of that effect. Part of that is finding ways to be competitive, but also finding ways to be good partners. This is a regional issue, and so we need to make sure that we're communicating with the surrounding areas and the school districts and making sure that we're playing our part to help that influx of people coming in. First, we need to look at housing, and that's something, as I opened up with, is really important to me, but I'm going to hold on that for a little bit, because that, I think, deserves a little bit more focus than another question. Second, we need to look at transportation. Our corridors need to be reinforced and make sure that we are building and maintaining our infrastructure, because we're going to have a lot of increased traffic as people commute to their jobs. But our roads aren't the only transportation feature. As people come into Shawnee, I'd love to see us invest a little bit more in that transportation ability through multimodal and trails, and be able to benefit from those kind of resources as people come in and participate in our parks and shop along our connected businesses along our corridors. And then third, with our businesses, let's make sure we're being intentional in supporting businesses that want to invest in that part of our city so that they can benefit as well as we have new people coming in.
Okay. Same question to you.
Okay. Panasonic plant, yes, we can do our part by making sure there aren't too many regulations so developers want to build here in Shawnee. However, we don't need to use the plant as an excuse to extend more incentives. If the demand is there and the time is right, the development will happen. I believe in a free market.
All right, thank you. Next question, and staying here with you Megan. What do you see as the growth trajectory of the K-7 corridor? What types of development do you expect to see in that area?
I believe industrial and commercial development is an option along K-7 if no incentives are necessary and the zoning is in place. In my discussions while I've been knocking on doors this summer, I've heard a lot of people say that they would like to see more restaurants and grocery stores in Shawnee, not so many car washes and tire stores or vape shops, but I do believe in a free market. If the demand is there and the zoning is in place, that doesn't even come to the city council and the development happens. I understand that we need more doors for those kind of businesses to be attracted to Shawnee, but I also know that citizens live in Western Shawnee for a reason. They like the green space, so they don't want dense neighborhoods. So we have to find a happy medium that fulfills both of those desires.
All right, thank you. Laurel, same question, K-7 corridor?
Yeah, so I grew up in Basar, so the K-7 corridor is one that I travel frequently. It's one I'm very familiar with, and it has changed a lot since I was a kid. So it's exciting to see all the potential there, and also to see the opportunities that we have to make sure that we're investing and supporting that area properly. Housing, I think, is a very important issue for this area, because we are going to see growth there, and this is, according to our comprehensive plan achieved Shawnee, the most appropriate and best place for us to invest in housing. Unfortunately, our city council has started a trend of saying no to anything that's not single-family. And I think that in Western Shawnee, there's lots of opportunity for single-family housing, but we also have plans and the ability to invest in other forms of housing. We have a growing and aging demographic that are going to need opportunities to downsize their houses and live in more manageable living dwellings. We have young professionals coming in who can't afford homes, and they need to be able to live in the place where they work and play and raise a family. And we also have people who choose to rent and want to live in multifamily facilities because of the amenities that are offered. I think that the K-7 corridor is the perfect place for us to be thoughtful and transparent about investing in housing that fits those needs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And moving from west to east here in Shawnee, next question, we're staying with you Laurel. City has experienced exciting growth in downtown Shawnee recently. What do you see as the next opportunities to keep that growing and vibrant?
I love the development downtown. That is something, again, growing up in Basar, we avoided the downtown, and so coming back and seeing just how thriving and vibrant that is, I think is fantastic, and I think we should continue to support the development of downtown and the redevelopment of downtown. Let's make sure, though, that we're using our funds wisely. I do believe in the CE program and the grants that are available to businesses in downtown. I do think we need to be very intentional with it and thoughtful so that we're using our funds in smart ways that are sustainable, but I don't want to back down just because we've seen success there. Let's not stop. Let's make sure that we are making an environment that is walkable and bikeable, that people can come in and enjoy it whether they live here or not, because that's going to increase our tax base and is going to bring in more dollars that we can then turn around and invest in our city in different ways. But we can't forget about the neighborhoods. Downtown has a lot of old, beautiful neighborhoods, and I know that they need investment, too. Sidewalks and curbs and gutters are things that the community has been waiting for for a long time, and that should be a priority of our city council to make sure that we're hearing that need and responding to it, without taking away trees, of course. I just think that the downtown area, though not the only place we should be looking at in terms of development and redevelopment, is such a perfect place for us to be proud right now of all that we've accomplished and all that I think we still can accomplish there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Megan?
Downtown, yes. As I mentioned previously, I love to see the Moonlight Market and the other things the city does, the scarecrow festival is really fun for my kids. We're also doing our part by patronizing the Flying Cow and the Plains and other local businesses as much as possible. We're a small-town hometown community, and I'd like to continue that. Drawing more family-friendly sit-down restaurants to the downtown area would be a high priority for me.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next question, and staying with you Megan. Top issue for all employers, public or private, is the need for qualified workforce. Overall, do you see the city of Shawnee playing in attracting qualified workers and/or addressing some of the barriers for employees, such as childcare and attainable housing?
Okay, this will be my longest answer, because I really feel like it's three questions in one. First of all, qualified workforce. A few days ago, I had some neighbors over for a baby shower, and as we were talking, despite coming from completely different backgrounds, we all found that we had moved to Shawnee for the same reasons, because of its community feel and its small-town feel. I think that if we keep that hometown feel, we will continue to attract qualified workers. And then, let's see. Oh, sorry, I'm not done with that one yet. We want qualified workers for the positions we have within both the public and private sectors. You may have heard about some employees leaving the city for jobs in other cities. To my knowledge, though, we are successfully filling these positions with skilled workers. The police and fire departments were struggling to fill empty spots, but I've heard at council meetings that we're almost fully staffed in both, where other cities are struggling because we increased salaries. Okay, so now for number two, childcare. That's regulated by the state, not the city and local government. We can issue permits for childcare centers and make sure that process is simple, but we don't really regulate making that more attainable. That's more on the state level. And then, housing is more at the county level. Unfortunately, they are increasing our cost of living more than anyone by not only increasing our assessed values, but also our mil levy. As I've knocked on a lot of doors this summer, and, oh, my time's up. Okay, I can keep going. Okay. Especially the seniors on fixed incomes that I've talked to, they're really worried about their taxes increasing because their income is not. So we can't change the county taxes, but we can do our part by examining the city taxes and our mil levy, and I would support lowering that responsibly in our city.
All right, thank you. Laurel, give me to repeat the question.
Yeah, I've got it right now. I think the city has a crucial role in attracting qualified workers. City has a role in establishing our reputation and in creating a welcoming environment, and all of that attracts qualified workers. The city council's job is to make life better for our residents, and sometimes that means making difficult decisions and listening to a lot of different input, and then making the decision that's right for the city, but that's the responsibility of elected officials. My position on housing should be pretty clear. I think that we need to invest in more diverse options for housing so that everybody has a place to live who wants to live here. I was very disappointed by the recent decision of the council to return the Zara project back to the Planning Commission, because that plan did follow our comprehensive plan, and I felt that the developer did a really good job of trying to meet the needs the city had already expressed. I'm hoping that moving forward, our city council does more than just say no, because saying no to things is not a vision for a city. For childcare, I'm a mom, and I think that that is crucial for helping people find work. If we want to talk about ways that we can improve people's lives, it's by doing our job to make sure that these kind of services are available, and not just childcare, quality childcare, reliable childcare that allows parents to know that they can go to work because they have a safe, reliable place for their children to thrive and invest in early childhood development, so that it's not just a place for them to be, it's a place for them to learn and grow. That's how we support our residents, not with just tax breaks, but by investing in them, and the city definitely has a responsibility in that.
Okay, thank you. All right, Laurel, staying with you. Next question. What would you say is the Shawnee community's competitive advantages are as they relate to the location of business?
We're in a really fantastic location with our cities, or, sorry, with our highways. We are the gateway to Kansas City. We're the first stop on 435 when you leave the airport. What we need to do is we need to make sure that it's a stopping place, not a drive-over place, and that means that we have to make opportunities that people want to stop and look at. I think that we have an excellent school system and educated workforce, and all of this creates a competitive advantage for our businesses who want to invest here or already here and want to hire from here. Achieve Shawnee already has a plan for a river park, and I think that that's also a unique geographic feature that we should be leaning into and making sure that we are utilizing to the best of our ability. That can bring in a really unique set of tourist opportunities with a riverfront. Not a lot of Johnson County can say that they have that, and that's something that we should be investing in further. Again, our comprehensive plan allows for that. We need to revisit it. Overall, I just think that we're in a really great place, and our businesses are very fortunate to have the support of our community and of our chamber to make the best advantage of being at the heart of so many different intersections for our region.
Okay, thank you. Megan?
Yes. I agree with Laurel. We do have an excellent location here in Shawnee. I drive all over the metro to inspect properties for my job, and I can get almost anywhere in less than 30 minutes, which is wonderful. I believe our business regulations in Shawnee are minimal and better than many similar cities. Again, I spoke with some business owners in Shawnee in preparation for tonight, and neither have had issues obtaining permits or licenses for their business. I would advocate for minimal licensing fees, and I love that we have a simple online way to file permits.
Thank you. Ninth question here, and staying with you Megan. What role, if any, do you believe the city should play in economic development to bring jobs and capital investment to the community?
We should fully support free-market enterprise that supports all of our Shawnee businesses. For the most part, I would be against incentives for development. Again, in a free market, if demand is present, development will occur, but we can do our part by keeping regulations minimal.
Okay, thank you. Same question, Laurel.
I do think that the city has a role in economic development, and that is why we have elected officials, is to get out of the way when we need to, but then be intentional and make decisions when we need to as well. So I think that we need to be intentional in identifying and cultivating and supporting those businesses that want to come here, that want to provide the good jobs and the financial benefit and help build community for Shawnee, because that's what we want. We want to make sure that we're moving forward and that we're embracing development in businesses that want to move forward with us. I think that our strong chamber and our Planning Commission need to be supported by the council, and that we need to rebuild trust and faith and relationships between some of our volunteer bodies and our council right now, so that we can continue to have a strong relationship and trust between us as we make important decisions. And overall, we just need to make sure that we are being good stewards of the resources that are available to us and being strategic and forward-looking so that the decisions we make around economic development don't just serve tomorrow, they're serving the next generation, and they're serving children like mine and others who want to make Shawnee their home for their families as they grow old as well.
Okay, thank you. Final question, the Q and A portion, before you have some opportunities here in a minute to provide closing statements. We're staying with you Laurel. What do you believe most distinguishes you from your opponent in this race and best qualified to serve?
This is always the hard question, because Megan is such a lovely person to speak with, but I do think that we have some very stark differences in the way that we view city responsibility and the city council decision-making process in particular. I think you've heard today a lot of exchanges about the free market versus being intentional and thoughtful stewards of our economic development and of our city. And I strongly believe that I have the ability to build those relationships, to listen to our community members, to our businesses, to our investors, to people who want to come to Shawnee, because I've had experience in working with nonpartisan relationships on very difficult issues before, and identifying solutions that move us forward that people get excited about and they want to be part of and they want to participate in in meaningful ways. I have a background in advocating on common sense policy around issues that directly affect people's lives: transportation, housing, public health, public education. This experience and understanding how all of these different dynamics interact and impact our community, I think, would benefit me a lot in being able to serve our city through a city council seat, and I just really feel that I have the strategic thought, the strategic mindset, to be able to think about moving forward in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan?
I've lived here in Shawnee for 30 years of my life. Based on our most recent move back to Shawnee from Oliva in 2019, there is no doubt Shawnee is a desirable place to live, because it took us forever to find a house that we could buy and actually win the bid on. I have spent the better part of my summer knocking on doors and listening to residents, so I feel prepared to respond to the needs of citizens. I am a fiscal conservative and will examine every dollar and prioritize spending on real needs so all our residents can enjoy a prosperous future. I support continuing to responsibly reduce the mil levy and lowering fees for families so Shawnee remains affordable.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the Q and A portion of this, so we will move on to each candidate. We'll now have two minutes for closing statements, and first, Megan Warner.
Thank you. I run a small business in Shawnee. We have wonderful business growth potential, and we need pro-small-business leaders to cultivate the local economy. As local business owners, it is our responsibility to vet and hire our leaders with the same scrutiny we would use to hire our own employees. Businesses keep the lights on in Shawnee, and that needs to be at the center of every council decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Laurel Birchfield.
All right. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak directly with you on these important issues. I really do appreciate the opportunity. And I believe that I have the experience to bring real leadership to our city council, to be strategic and thoughtful, to honor our strategic plan and the resident input that developed that, but also be flexible and understand that a document that is supposed to exist for 10 to 20 years doesn't need to stay in its current form as things change. We do need to have some flexibility about the way that we envision the future of our city, but we also need to honor the work that has been done and the needs of the people who live here and who want to live here. And I think I have the experience and the skill set to be able to do that in productive ways and to work in nonpartisan ways to make sure that we really are finding the best solutions for Shawnee. I would love to make local politics boring again. I think we've gotten into a place where things happen in a city council and a governing body that really shouldn't be happening there, and I would strive to make sure that those things are left outside of the chamber and that we're able to just make smart decisions that help people who want to live in Shawnee. I have worked in nonprofits on long-term strategic planning, and that is a strength of mine that I would bring to this council as well, because I think that we really need to make sure that we are, again, serving future generations and not just making quick decisions that make us feel good about how we are saving a couple dollars a month for our residents on their taxes, but instead doing things that make a long-term impact on their lives, that allow them to thrive here for the future and for their children's future. And those are the hard decisions that have to be made by this council and that I would be taking on if you elected me to serve in this seat. I hope I earn your vote. I do have a website if you would like to learn more about me and my positions and my history, that's laurelforshawnee.com. Please reach out. I'd love to hear from everybody about how things are going for you, and thank you again.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes our forum for Shawnee City Council Ward Four. On behalf of the Shawnee Chamber, I want to give you both a very deep appreciation for being here. We have candidates Laurel Birchfield and Megan Warner.